I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order for December 17th, 2012. Roll call. Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moisio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempass. Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. I'd also like to entertain a motion to seat a mayor pro tem.
Chair pro tem.
Chair pro tem.
I'll make the motion.
For who? Moisio?
Greg.
Alderman Greg. Alderman Greg Moisio, second.
Second.
Second by eighty. Falls in favor? Craig?
Thank you. Do I have to go over there? Can I come from here, Newton? Do I have to go up?
It's all right.
Okay. I'd like everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then we'll follow in prayer by Alderman Newsom if she would, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to still be here in the land of the living. I ask that you will be with the families in Connecticut that lost their young children, principal, teachers. I ask that you would comfort their hearts during this time and that you would heal that community, Lord. I ask that you would be with our police and fire as they protect our communities. I ask that you would protect our children as they go to school to learn. I ask that you would be with them. In your word, Father, you told us to acknowledge you and you would direct our path, so I'm asking that you would direct us and lead and guide us this evening as we make decisions that affect all of us in this community. I ask that you would lead and guide. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Alderman Newsom. We will start out with some mayor's comments, although I'm not the mayor. He left me with a few things to do. First, I'd like to thank Deborah Santiago and Millie Beadron for the decorations of the city council chambers, so thank you to those ladies. Also, the mayor has left me and said that Andrea Danks from Integris could speak tonight during mayor's comments. Is Mrs. Danks here? Is she here? Okay, we don't have to worry about that. All right, now. Couple of resolutions and...oh, she is here? Andrea Danks? Oh, someone's...
Dean Nichol is here.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Come on up. You have the mic.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I can't miss the opportunity to do this. In keeping with the spirit of the season, I have to say happy holidays specifically to Noel Kircher. Couldn't pass that up. But it's nice to be here. The room is obviously, you know, in the spirit of the season and decorated that way. My name is Dean Nichol. I work with Integris Energy Services. I'm a colleague of Andrea Danks. And I came here tonight just to provide an update to all of you on municipal aggregation in Illinois. I know several of the trustees looked into this, or the aldermen looked into this in March, before the March primary. A lot has happened since then, and I do this simply to give you information to...so you can determine whether or not you want to look at it again in the future. There's new information and new data. So I'm not here to sell my company necessarily, but just talk about what's happened in the state of Illinois. So Waukegan...actually, could I pass these out real quick?
Sure. To everybody?
This was for everyone.
Yeah. I'll take them. Find them. So Waukegan looked at municipal aggregation in March, ran a referendum and asked the residents of Waukegan whether or not the city should arrange for electric rates for residential customers and small commercial customers that don't opt out of such program. It's a process that's required, that's allowed by Illinois statute, statute, and required if the municipality wants to move forward with what we call opt-out aggregation. And opt-out aggregation simply means that a town can pool the buying power of a community, negotiate a rate with a supplier that is licensed by the ICC with the intent of offering savings to its residents. So in the March primary, that question was on the ballot here. It did not pass at that time. At that time, however, there were only 20 towns in Illinois on the eve of that primary that had passed municipal aggregation before that. So since then, a lot has changed. In that March primary, 226 communities passed municipal aggregation. In the November election, well over 200 communities had municipal aggregation on the ballot again, and over 200 of them passed. So since this was first looked at in March, over 400 communities have passed municipal aggregation referenda. The result of that has been that by...included in those 200 communities that passed this in the month of November was the city of Chicago. The city of Chicago has selected their supplier that happens to be Integris. The result of those events is going to be that by the time April this year rolls around, 70 percent of the residential customers in the state of Illinois will have chosen a third-party supplier or will have had their community select a third-party supplier for them and participated in that program. So 70 percent of us homeowners in the state of Illinois will be buying the energy portion of our bill from somebody other than ComEd or the utility downstate, Ameren. That's important to know because there are implications of those switching rates to those of us that don't choose a third party. First and foremost, in the state of Illinois, there's been a precedent in other rate classes that once switching rates exceed a level of 35 percent, that rate class is compared what we call the competitive. So the fixed-rate option to buy from the utility goes away. That's been the precedent set here in Illinois in other rate classes. In other states, when switching levels exceed 35, 40 percent...
How much longer do you have?
A couple minutes.
Okay.
Just a couple minutes. The state will do away with the fixed-rate option for residential customers. So that may happen here, but most importantly, in Illinois, there's an item on your bill, which I've left with each one of the aldermen here, called the purchase electricity adjustment, which essentially allows the utility companies to recoup their costs so they don't lose any money on the energy portion of their bill. That charge will go up for the remaining 30 percent of residents that remain with utility companies as more and more people switch away from the utility. There is a stranded cost that gets bundled up and paid for by whoever is left purchasing electricity from the utility company. So that's just something to be aware of. It's an important fact. Again, over 70 percent of residents in the state will have done this by April, and I wanted to provide the aldermen with that update tonight, and that's all I have in the way of prepared comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now for two resolutions. The first one...
You've got audience time.
No, is that first or is that...
Audience.
Yeah. Right there.
Audience.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Oh, audience time, okay. They told me this was going to be during mayor's time, no?
Oh, really?
Yeah, that'll be during mayor's time. Mayor's is before...
Yeah, mayor's is before...
Mayor's is before audience.
This one? All right. All right, let's get back to the resolutions. Sorry about that. First one. Josh Bill named National History Teacher of the Year. Waukegan High School teacher, history teacher, Mr. Josh O'Bill has been named 2012 National History Teacher of the Year by Gilder Lerman Institute of American History, History and Preserve America. The Gilder Lerman Institute of American History, a nonprofit organization devoted to the improvement of history education, annually recognizes outstanding American history teachers from the elementary school through high school. The national honor comes with a $10,000 award. As the Illinois winner, Mr. Bill also receives a $1,000 prize and an archive of books and historical resources for the WHS library. Mr. Bill was nominated for the award by the WHS literature instructor, Mrs. Alice Schultz, who commended him for stimulating his students' thirst for historical knowledge and local history, particularly through the Chicago Metro History Fair and the National History Day competition. With that, Mr. Bill, will you please come up here?
Just how much I'm going to brag is I got it from him.
We don't teach the same subject and we don't teach together, but we are in the same building, had many conversations in Waukegan High School. It's very, very lucky to have, very lucky to have, so it's...very lucky.
Thank you very much to city council, Coach Mo, that's what we call him over at school, and the mayor, of course, and all of you, really. When I heard I'd won this award, I thought that the title was too lofty for me. I know there's a lot of great teachers in this city, a lot of great teachers in our school and our school district, and so I guess I'm accepting it on behalf of all these teachers who aren't recognized but are doing exceptional, phenomenal work with our students. It's really all about them. I know that sounds cliche, but that's the reason I won the award. Everybody associated with this award has told me it's what I'm doing with my students and really, it's what they do for me. I'm not an easily motivated person, and every day I face some of Waukegan's best, and how can I not step it up for them? I need to prove myself every day to them, and I...it's a joy and a privilege to do so. Teaching American history is one of the best gigs on the planet, and it needs to be taught well, and I still think I have some work to do, to be honest with you, but I'm glad to accept the word on behalf of Waukegan, the public schools, and history education in general. I hope that the quality of history instruction can continue to go in the right direction. Thank you all so much tonight and have a great holiday.
Our next resolution proclamation is Cook fourth grader wins national art contest. Cook Magnet School fourth grader Henry Montalavo is making quite the name for himself in art contests. For the second time in three years, Henry, a student in Ms. Buckus's class, has won first place in a national scholastic art contest. Henry was recently named the grand prize winner of the Scholastic Lucky Book Club's Super Battle Against Bullies contest. Henry's art submission was chosen as the winner for more than 5,000 national entries. As the winner, Henry's school has earned a visit from Dave Pilkey, the author of the popular children's series Captain Underpants. Cook is hoping to have Mr. Pilkey visit to some school sometime in early 2013. Henry's black and white artwork illustrates anti-bullying tips for George and Harold, who are the main characters in the Captain Underpants series. In the drawing, George and Harold are depicted in various humorous situations that attempt to quell a bully's anger. Mr. Peckley would be the second major children's author to visit Cook in recent years. As a second grader in early 2011, Henry beat out 2,500 other second, third, and fourth graders from around the country in scholastics. Mike Thaler School Visit Contest. Thaler is the author of the popular Black Lagoon children's series. The contest called for students to draw pictures of Mike Thaler visiting their school. For his winning entry, Henry created a pencil drawing depicting Mr. Thaler visiting students at Cook and encountering a scary bathroom full of strange things going on. So congratulations to Henry. And Henry, please come up here. Bring whoever you want up here, Henry. Your parents, whoever's with you.
Where's his parents? Parents?
I'm...
Okay. Who else?
Yes.
Come on. Everybody, come on. You don't need any... Okay, so where are they? Awesome. And then did Henry want to say a couple words and then the parents? Henry, parents or...or Henry, go ahead. Call yours, Henry. Stand over here so everyone can see you.
We want to say something, but you're with?
Uh, yeah. It's really special that I've won at Cook Magnet two times, not just one, but two times, and that's special.
It is special. And I think we have to thank some of those ladies right over there. First of all, I'm incredibly touched that his principal and his current teacher came here tonight. They didn't have to come here. We're completely shocked, but that's the kind of staff that you have at Cook Magnet. They're totally incredible. And then a special thanks to Mrs. Aherm, who was Henry's second grade teacher, but in many ways has almost become like a family member for us. She was the one who first told Henry about the contest two years ago, saw a lot of potential, and we were shocked that he won, and it was magical, but we didn't think it could happen again. But she's the one who told us this year, you know, fingers crossed, maybe magic could happen again, and like the gentleman before Henry, he's not easily motivated to do stuff either. But I think it's moments like this that we realize that hard work does pay off and that magic does happen, sometimes more than once. So we're overjoyed and we're very touched to even be here tonight for him to be recognized. Thank you very much.
I was Henry's second grade teacher, and I want to say what an honor it was to teach him and to see such talent in a young man. And when I heard about this second contest, I'll be very honest, after meeting the first author, I really, really wanted to meet this guy because for us, he's a rock star. He has sold over 50 million books. He's the most popular author, and he's coming to Waukegan. I mean, that's quite amazing. He's coming to Waukegan to meet Henry. And I believe that 5,000 other teachers also went to their students since there were 5,000 entries, but this little guy did it for us. I have some letters from local people that wanted to congratulate you, State Senator Terry Link, and Fiamigos has a family meal for you.
Oh, my gosh.
To enjoy yourselves on them.
Oh, my gosh.
So congratulations, Henry.
Yes, sir.
This is awesome.
Yes.
I don't know if everybody has gotten a chance to see this, but Henry, I think if we are able to not only pass it around, but get his autograph...
Yeah, get his autograph and put it in City Hall.
Get his autograph and display it for a little bit here at City Hall. That'd be great.
Yeah, get his autograph and we'll...good idea, Alderman.
That's awesome.
Very, very good idea.
Yeah.
All right, we will move on. Next on the agenda is audience time, and first up is Roxanne Newland. Please state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Roxanne Newland. Alderman Conken, will you be my official timekeeper, please?
I will, if you would like.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roxanne Newland from 5540 Hilltop Lane in Waukegan, and I have been pondering the issue that you all have been addressing about the property tax increase. And I'm here this evening because I'd like to share with you that I'm against the proposed significant increase in the city property tax. From my perspective, the proposed increase significantly outstrips any income increases that your residents and businesses are experiencing. We are your revenue base. Incomes are either flat or are declining. The period of 3 percent or more cost of living increases has gone by the wayside. Today, people feel grateful if they can just keep their jobs even with reduced incomes. Consequently, we all have had to tighten our belts and focus on the essentials of our living. We clearly understand how difficult it is to evaluate our budgets and come back and cut back in what we can afford. It's not fun, but as you can well aware, it has to be done. The city's real estate taxes have consistently far exceeded the cost of living increases over the years. I have been a property owner in Waukegan for over 20 years. In that period of time, my real estate taxes have risen far above the cost of living increases, and as residents, as we are looking at our rising city of Waukegan real estate taxes, it's been over 86 percent increase in the past 15 years. Unfortunately, with the current home value deflation, the same residents over that period are now experiencing significant cuts in the value of their homes from those early purchase prices of 15-plus years ago. So while our taxes are going up significantly, our home values are not. Along River Road, the homes are not selling. Buyers are saying they love the homes, the neighborhood, but the property taxes are just too high. So to sell a home, the price has to be significantly lowered, and ultimately, your tax base is being eroded. And that concerns me as a Waukegan resident. I don't want to see your tax base be eroded, nor do you all. In my own business and in those of my corporate clients, we've all had to seriously review every component of our budgets, painfully look for serious cost savings, and make those very tough decisions. We've not enjoyed it, nor I know that you all have not either, but it is the responsible thing to do. As mayor, or mayor pro tem, and alderman, we really do...are looking for you to exercise your leadership, to follow a similar path that we as residents, private sector businesses, and other public governmental bodies are having to do. Incomes are not increasing, as I mentioned earlier.
Ma'am, are you almost done?
I'm almost done.
Okay.
The tax increase needs to be lower than currently proposed. I was pleased to see, I think if I read the agenda correctly, is that the 21 percent is no longer on the table. But to be honest with you, I think the 10 or the 14 percent is still too high, and I'm sort of sorry to see that the 8 percent has disappeared. What we really are needing you to do going forward is to make sure that there's really serious and responsible zero-based budgeting, and that's what we will be looking for you to do.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, that's it. Three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, I had the best part to say I have confidence that you guys could do it.
Well, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Matt Burleson?
Good evening. Matt Burleson, 803 Atlantic. I'm also the treasurer for the Waukegan Main Street Board, and I want to share with you what we're doing downtown this month. We'll start out with our holiday walk that was on the 8th. According to the amount of flyers we passed out, we had 800 families come through our downtown just during the holiday walk event. We also...also during Art Walk, we saw great new shows at the Dandelion Gallery and the opening of a brand-new gallery, the Water Street Gallery. I'll bring your attention to the brand-new exhibit that is going on at our wonderful library, the Boo...ah, the Boo...the Moo Ba Oink exhibit. They have quite a farm going on down there. They have live chicks. Kids have an opportunity to milk a pretend cow and participate in a lot of great activities you wouldn't really get to participate in. Right now, we're working on our current work plans for 2013, and we look forward to sharing them with all of you in January. And I would like to highlight that our upcoming Mardi Gras, Masquerade, and Casino Night fundraiser will be held February 9th at the Puerto Rican Society's banquet hall. Invitations are going to go out around New Year's, and tickets will be available through our website at waukegaminestreet.org, or you can call our office at 847-623-6650. I also have flyers here if anybody wants one. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Dawn Buckis, is that right? B-U-C-K-I-S. Is she here? Dawn? Calvin Mathis.
Good evening. My name is Calvin Mathis. I live at 528 Leith Avenue. I want to...like the lady before me, I want to voice my opinion on the increase in taxes. I was hoping that the mayor would be here because the last meeting, I thought when he finished his statement as far as the reasons why, it was a good case. I even thought for a minute, I said, "This man could sell me the Golden Gate Bridge." But the only thing Alderman Beedling would talk me out of it, because the points that the mayor made were very good points. He's...some of the points he made, quality of life, staff, code enforcement, economic development, fixed streets, water plants, rainy day fund, create new jobs, which I put a star by. And he had some good points, and I was, "Yeah, I mean, the taxes need to go up." But at the end, Alderman Beedling, he read an article that really made me think twice. He read an article, which was a great article, Alderman, and what it entailed was, the more money, studies have shown, I guess it was a study, that the more money that a city takes in, the more it wastes. And I couldn't help but thinking after you read that article of the $96,000 we pay a year for this lobbyist. And for that amount of money and talking about increasing taxes, I'm not sure what we're getting as a city. I mean, everybody's paying taxes. That's an investment, I would assume. It's a gamble. It's, to me, more of a gamble, because I never see the guy show up. We never hear about, "Well, what are we..." At least last year, we were trying to get a gambling bill. At least we got a report on that, where we were at, but this year, there's nothing. So my concern is with this raising in taxes, what are we going to get? Are we going to get more waste for spending? Or are we going to get some quality things? All these things he has listed here, I just thought about. He didn't list anything in education. I just thought about the young man that got up here. It would have been nice for something that I'm sure that...but I'm sure those just thought that the mayor was just throwing out there. Also, I was thinking about the hiring of the firemen and the policemen. I have a concern about some of the diversity that, you know, this is a diverse board up here, and that hiring, I just kind of question that. I'm not going to go there, as Alderman Rivera will say. I think you know what I'm talking about. And that was about it. That was my concern about this tax, and I know where it's going up. I just, I'm concerned about 20 percent. That's kind of high. It's very high. And so I'm sure we all have that. But also, Alderman, Moisio, I really appreciate your work, that you've been working with our ward, and I just want to personally thank you for working with me on certain issues. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Lena Marsh?
Name and address, please. Hi, my name is Lena Marsh, and I live at 5283 West Riverbend Drive. I'm glad to see that there has been a reconsideration of the 21 percent property tax increase, but reducing this to 14 percent still doesn't fairly account for the overall financial picture. Most people have seen no growth in either personal income or property values, and many people at all levels of home ownership have faced the same economic realities the past several years. The unemployment rate for Waukegan stands at 9.2 percent from today's Bureau of Labor Statistics report. It makes no sense to increase taxes. That exceeds the growth rate for the community, but I believe that you haven't cut the budget enough. A 5 percent increase or less is more in keeping with the true state of affairs. Please consider carefully the decision you make. I believe staying at this level or lower will avoid further compounding the impact that the current economic downturn has already had on our community. Thank you.
Chuck. I'm going to try to get it right. Chuck Lakey?
My name is Chuck Lakey, and I live at 5531...
A five percent increase or less is more in keeping with the true state of affairs. Please consider carefully the decision you make. I believe staying at this level, or lower, will avoid further compounding the impact that the current economic downturn has already had on our community. Thank you.
Chuck, I'm gonna try to get it right. Chuck Lakey?
My name is Chuck Lakey, and I live at fifty-five thirty-one Hilltop Lane. Uh, you've heard me before talk about the taxes and how I'm much, I am opposed to it. Um, so I'm kind of giving a little bit of a recap here tonight, as I saw all of the stockings in here, and hear everybody saying happy holidays, well, to me, it's merry Christmas. But I'd like to see the, the, um, just, um, I would like to thank everybody up on the board for helping us in the ninth ward, and I'm trying to do this tongue-in-cheek, but thank you for letting us pay double our going rate for sewer and water. Uh, thank you for, uh, letting us be the highest rate in any tax city in Lake County for our personal property taxes. Thank you for not assigning any police officers west of Lakehurst. Thank you for scratching and patching our main thoroughfare River Road, and thank you for showing us that the deteriorating conditions of foreclosed homes in downtown Waukegan is everyone's responsibility, not just, um, not just the homeowners who are in the banks who won, are involved. And thank you for continuing to make communications on critical issues for the community of Waukegan very, very difficult. Merry Christmas.
Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, four zero nine Oak Street, Waukegan. Uh, you know, this issue with the front license plate, it just won't seem to go away. Uh, I've been here before regarding this issue, a young man here two or three weeks ago was here regarding the issue. I'm looking at a ticket here, uh, that was issued on November twenty-fourth. That was after the young man had came here, uh, where the ticket was issued here for no front license plate. And my thing is if, whatever you're gonna do is for these ordinance that have to be fair across the board, I'm asking that whatever you do, don't be hypocritical in your enforcement of the law. It's called, well, as I said before, hypocritical and unfair enforcement of the law. You know, I, I went to federal court with you guys before on being hypocritical under the five hundred dollar empowerment. You rake citizens over the coals under that law, under that ordinance. It's not right. You, you can't continue to do that. But maybe I need to bring my point home here a little bit further. But before I do that, I want to say to the citizens, now, let me do this first here, because this issue was, this ticket was issued on the twenty-fourth. Now, this is a car. You can zoom in on this. Has no front license plates. As you can see, it is sitting right there in front of the city council. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, city clerk, is this not your car, sir?
Yep.
Okay, we, we can't help this. It's not right. You, you can't do this. You cannot continue to issue tickets to the citizens, and I'm not just pointing the finger at him, because what I'm saying, this is your comrade. You all silence his agreement. If you all can't hold your own comrade accountable, how you gonna, how you gonna impose such tickets on the citizens of this city? It's not right. It's not fair, and it leaves room to question. You got citizens sitting here, and this is the first time I even spoke or touched on the issue regarding taxes. But if this is the basis of how you going to enforce the law, where some are going to be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law and get tickets, while others can go free, then it leave me room to question. Is there going to be some that are able to pay the taxes on the burden of the citizens, while some not be able to pay taxes? I don't know. But if you're not being fair across the board in the enforcement of basic law like this, then what says you're gonna be fair in the taxes that you're gonna impose on the citizens while maybe some don't pay? So I'm saying, please, and I'm putting this out to the citizens, if any of you have received a ticket for not having a front license plate within the last year, within this year, and if you get any after the date, please feel free to call BAM at seven seven three five one zero seventeen thirteen. That's seven seven three five one zero seventeen thirteen. Nobody wants to hurt this city, okay? But you, you can't continue to do this. Nobody wants to go to court and take this city to suit, to court for unfair, uh, for frivolous lawsuits. But yet, I can't sit idly by and watch you hurt the citizens of the city. Somebody have to say something. So all I'm saying is, you guys gotta hear this. You can't do this. That's hypocrisy. We can't impose this on the citizens, and that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for your time.
That concludes, uh, audience time. I'll take a motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom, to approve the minutes of December the third, two thousand twelve, regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, we took care of resolutions, proclamations, committee reports. We had one, Labor Relations Committee, one item. A, approve collective bargaining agreement between city of Waukegan and Teamsters Local Number Seven Hundred, representing police lieutenants. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Newsom. Any questions from the council on this?
I just want to go on record to say, uh, congratulate, uh, Corporation Council and, uh, staff. I mean, they did this, uh, pretty quick.
Yes.
You know, in a couple hours, so, uh, we appreciate that. We saved a lot of money on legal fees, so, thank you very much.
With that, roll call vote, please. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Newsom.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moyes.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
All right, now to old business. Item A, ordinance levying and assessing taxes of the city of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, for the two thousand twelve tax levy year. Option A, corporate purpose, one point one five million dollars, police pension, four point six two nine seven, uh, hold on. Oh, oh, five. Doesn't it? Oh, okay. I'm just, okay. Let me do that again, excuse me. Option A, corporate purpose, one point one five million, police pension, five million six hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven forty, fire pension, three million eight hundred and thirty-six eight hundred, garbage disposal, five million seven hundred and
Grow in this community with such limited resources. That's all I have.
Alderman Velco.
Let me start by saying I'm very disappointed and displeased on how the tax levy process came to the council this evening. So everyone has the gist of what has transpired, I'll go over it again. During the tax levy hearing, I stated that the residents of the 8th Ward with whom I either had spoken with or met with understood that some form of tax hike was needed due to the added expenditures of the city, including the hiring of new police and fire personnel. I promised them that I would not support any tax levy that was more than 8%. So I proposed an increase of 8% to counter the 14% and the 21% offered at the time. Last council meeting, I had the proposal brought to the council in ordinance form, and all three ordinance were tabled to this evening so the alderman could further study them. Last Monday, I retrieved, last Monday, excuse me, I retrieved a voice message on my home phone from the mayor telling me that the 8% ordinance had been pulled from the agenda as it was not deemed to be a viable option, and the only two being brought forward were the 10% and the new 14% proposal, and that if I had any other further questions, I could contact the finance director, essentially dismissing me from speaking to him again on the issue. I am not aware that an ordinance or issue brought forward by an alderman that was previously on the agenda for discussion or vote can be summarily dismissed and taken off the agenda because someone doesn't like it, or it doesn't fill their needs. Because of what has transpired, and because the citizens of Waukegan cannot afford a large increase when so many are out of work, only working part-time or on social security, I will vote no on both of these proposals when they come up for a vote this evening.
Tina, on option B, Newton has told you we have a problem. How do we address that?
I'm sorry, what?
The police, the corporate, the pension, all those.
Tina, there's no corporate purpose on B. It's about complaining to the council and to the citizens what that means.
So initially in the truth in taxation hearing, there was a 21% estimate, and that's estimating high. That's to make sure that we have accounted for all possible expenditures, and that's what triggered the truth in taxation. So we've been discussing a 21%, and this includes bonded debt. A 21% increase, a 10% increase, and then Alderman Velco had presented an 8% increase as well. The 10% increase never included a corporate piece. It always was the police, the statutory minimum, as all the options had, for police pension, fire pension, garbage disposal, and then it also earmarked funds for the SAFER and CHIRP grants. And then the library would be at the same level as the prior year, and that's the 19.9. So it does not include a corporate purpose as part of this levy. So those operational issues will have to be addressed in other venues during the budget process in the spring.
Mr. Chair, may I speak, sir?
Yes, sir. Alderman Cunningham.
I mentioned before that I think Tina and her staff did a very good job of identifying and itemizing the various items that we must pay for or to operate our city. I think in the past with our corporate levy, a lot of these items were hid. Now that we have them out on the table as to what and how it takes to operate the city of Waukegan, from our police pension, from our employees, to our water for infrastructure, these things are now on your tax bill. You're going to see that. And I think that was very, very important for our citizens to understand. To the young ladies who spoke earlier, as much as I would like for our expenses to go up no more than the average cost of living goes up, the unfortunate part is our labor cost does not dictate that. Our garbage cost does not dictate that. It is out of our hands. Always have and always continue to be out of the hands of us. I remember back when there was an issue with a crime that was committed in the city of Waukegan. And there was an uproar of people saying that our city was being overtaken by criminals. And I can remember loudly people stating that it was because the policemen were terminated early is the reason that this happened. Then echoing that and following that, it was, we need police officers. We need them on every corner. If we don't have them on every corner, the criminals will take over the city of Waukegan. Well, that voice was heard loud and clear amongst all of us. But I caution that that was not the truth. That was not what was going on in our city. But we needed officers. Officers then were hired. But there was a tag to that hiring of officers. There was a cost to hiring those officers. There is a cost to hiring other employees, our first responders. This is the cost. It is what it is. There is nothing that we can do about the cost. Tonight, a contract stating what we're going to pay some of our senior-level first responders. There's nothing that we can do about it, except manage it the best that we can. It's unfortunate that the cost that exists in our society dictates that the rate of what it is from your property tax, they have to go up. What that up is, I'm going to rely on Tina and her staff, along with the mayor, to give us the best information to make the best possible decision. My disappointment comes tonight, and maybe the mayor pro tem has this himself. I would like to know what the mayor thinks. What option is he going with to help guide the alderman? I don't know if the mayor pro tem has that. I don't know if Tina has that. I don't know if the corporation council has that. But I would like to know exactly what the mayor is proposing, not what it looks like. We know some of the facts. We understand where we're at. But Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything that tells you where our mayor stands? Is he with the 14%? Is he with the 10%? Is he with the 8%? Do we have anything from a guidance from him?
No. I mean, I all, no.
It is very difficult for us to manage his operations and manage ours from a legislative standpoint. Those are my comments in regards to that. Thank you.
Any other comments by the other? Alderman Beedling?
This is what a nation in decline looks like. Private sector, nobody's getting raises, yet our police lieutenants, we're going to give them a pay raise. I'm sure they earn their money. However, in these times, I think people just need to tighten their belt. Everybody does, especially government workers. How are we going to keep our streets paved? How are we going to repair our water system? Comment was made about real estate taxes increasing exponentially over the last 10, 12 years. Well, that's what happens when the government gets involved in mortgage loans, encouraging cheap mortgage loans, no-money-down loans. That's what inflates home values. I remember distinctly in the early 2000s, gentlemen that I worked with all giddy over their increasing property values. Enabled them to take out home equity line of credit, second mortgage. Some went on vacations with the money. Some bought cars. Well, the pigeons are here to roost now. The city provides services here. This, in my opinion, this is the only level of government where you actually get some bang for your buck. You got a complaint? I would look at the state legislature and the federal government. They do nothing but pass down expensive mandates. State is in serious arrears in their pension. Their pension programs, I'm not going to hold my breath that they're going to seriously address that issue. And we're all in the hook for all that pension liability, retiree healthcare liability. That's where the real costs are. Look in your paycheck, the deductions. They just raised the tax hike on individuals, 67%, I believe, last year. Now they want to make it permanent. I don't know. I'm concerned about the quality of streets in the 4th Ward. We need money to pave these streets. I don't want to borrow the money anymore to pave streets, paying interest. That money could be used to pave even more streets. I don't know what anybody's going to decide up here, but the game's over. You know, we have fixed costs. We have 85% unionized workforce in the city. Our hands are tied. If we don't agree to labor contracts, it ends up going to arbitration, which I think most of the time we end up losing. I don't know why. Those are the problems that we face. We're locked in, 85%. 75% of the budget goes to police and fire. There's not much left after that. This mayor here cut 40% of the workforce when he took office. So how many people the payroll was pumped up? Somewhat balanced the budget. I think we still have an operating deficit. Is that correct, Finance Director? Do we have a?
Yeah.
Still trying to reconcile that. The money has to come from somewhere, and that's the residents of this community. At least, if we levy money to fix the streets, we can see what we're paying for here. I don't know what the state's doing with my money. I have no idea. Do you? I'm done.
Any other comments? Alderman Rivera?
In terms of the 9th Ward, other than the 8th Ward, the 9th Ward probably produces the highest property tax revenue in the city of Waukegan. I've been communicated to, despite what my good friend Chuck said over there earlier, tongue-in-cheat. I've read a lot of email, read about the concerns of my constituents, not only in the inner part of the city, but the western part of the city too, out west on River Road. And I understand their concerns. You know, even at 10%, you know, you're looking at an additional for some of the property owners out there. You're talking, you know, million-dollar homes. You're talking over $1,000 more, and even sometimes close to $2,000 more per year. But at the same time, you know, and I have to commend Tina and your office. We have transparency now. You know, everything she has brought out to us to vote on. In the past, and I remember earlier, in the early part of our, you know, our tenures here as alderman, you know, there's been abatements in the past, and that's been the problem. You know, baiting in the past. Now we're asking, you know, to help, you know, get our budget straight all in one lump sum. That's tough for the taxpayers to swallow. We've done a lot of cutbacks. We have. And I've talked to Joan earlier this week. You know, we talk about, you know, we've cut back, we've asked all our department heads to cut back. But I like to see, you know, I wanted the people to really see, you know, the facts on that, and how much we've cut back, how much we've cut back on public works, how much overtime we've cut back. Layoffs, how did that, you know, affect our budget? You know, I like to see facts, and because people like to see those type of numbers too as well. We can sit here and talk all about that, but, you know, we have and believe we've done some tough, it's not easy laying off people. So now we're coming up to this vote tonight, and, you know, even at 10%, I cannot support something like that. So when it comes to time to vote, I will, you know, vote no, and I know how important it is to, you know, keep our services going in the city of Waukegan. I know how important it is, but I also know it's tough out there for the people as well. That's all I have to say.
I have one question. Tina, since there's no corporate purpose on option B, what does the corporate purpose used for?
Historically, the city has used the corporate purpose as a catch-all category for general fund budgeting. With eliminating that entirely, that'll eliminate property taxes as a general tax source for us to pay for things other than the liabilities related to pension, the garbage, the library, et cetera. So it's really taking property taxes out of a bucket for day-to-day operational purposes. Just for a little bit of background, kind of touching on what Alderman Rivera had discussed. Over the past three years, our general fund revenue has increased 4.3%, and our expenditures have decreased 2%. So even though we've reduced our staffing levels by 43%, the costs associated with other things, pension liability, health insurance, post-retirement health insurance, the garbage collection costs, those increase exponentially even when we've reduced our workforce. And also, we did abate property taxes years ago on bonded debt. So, you know, it is kind of a catch-up scenario. So even though we've increased our other revenues and decreased our expenses, we still have about a one and a half to $2 million deficit going into the budget with this 10% option. But those are things that we will have to address during the budget process through either, you know, looking at other ways to raise revenues or other ways to cut expenses. That's assuming status quo.
Okay. Thank you. All right. No other comments? Let's call for the question.
Alderman Conken.
There was a motion on the floor by Alderman May, second by myself, for option B, which is the 10%. Call for the question, please.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Failed. Looks like we're coming back on Thursday night.
So I think legally you'll have to vote for the 14% even though it's not going to vote, I mean, it's not going to pass. It's on there, right?
Well, you guys give me some direction. What do you want to do?
Well, obviously, if the 10 didn't pass, the 14's not going to pass. But I mean, legally, corporation council, don't you have to present it?
No one made a motion.
There's no motion pending to accept it, though.
Okay.
But we do have a drop dead date on this, as we know.
Correct.
So I think there's a problem of Thursday night. There's a historical preservation meeting here, so perhaps Wednesday would be the best night if the council wishes to consider that for a special meeting.
All right. Would I be out of line, sir, if I make a motion to go back to the 8% tax levy? The ordinance for the 8%?
No.
There'd be a motion to amend, Alderman. You would say to amend.
I would like to make a motion to amend the 10% to the 8% tax levy which was previously presented.
Is there a second?
Do you want to read those categories into the record?
Yeah, would you, Tina?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Alderman Velco. Police pension, $5,629,740. Fire pension, $3,836,800. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, $257,016. Garbage disposal, $5,749,110. Public library, $3,842,000. For a total aggregate tax levy of $19,314,666.
If I might make a correction there, since we're on camera here, I think you said 5,000 for the tax levy for the garbage.
$5,729,110.
That's roughly, that's roughly $600,000 less than the 10%.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Velco for the 8%. Do we have a second? Anybody for a second? No one for a second.
I'd like for a lack of a second.
I'll second it.
You'll second it, Moizio?
Okay.
The vote would be on the amendment.
Motion by Alderman Velco, second by Alderman Moizio to amend the 2012 tax levy. The city of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, I guess we'll call it, it's amended, so it'd be 8% with the categories as read.
If I might, this would be the vote to amend the motion, not the vote on the motion itself. There would be a subsequent vote.
So this is the motion, just to amend it from whatever to 8.
Can we have discussion?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. There are motions on the floor. Alderman May.
So my concern with this proposal is that we're not earmarking for the two, for funding the two grants that we've agreed. For the police and fire grants. That's not addressed, as well as there's no corporate purpose in this one. Correct, Tina? So I guess the reason I was strongly supporting the 10% was because I knew for sure that our police and fire, the grants that we've already agreed to take, we all knew that when we took them, we had to pay for them. They aren't earmarked. And that's my biggest concern with Alderman Velco's proposal, although I commend him for working hard on this and coming up with another option. That is my concern. So I just, I'm going to have a hard time supporting it, not knowing where we're going to be paying for these two grants that we've already agreed to, because if we default on these grants, it's going to cost us a heck of a lot more money than the 2% difference between the 10 and the 8.
Yeah, it won't be 600,000. It'll be a lot more than that. Alderman Velco.
Tina, the prior grants, though you weren't here, but maybe you know, the COPS More Grant, the COPS More Grant '96, there was a couple of more COPS More Grants. Where does the money come from? I know specifically, they were earmarked on this tax bill, so we could, so the citizens could pay for it. But the money just comes out of the fund, correct?
For the current grants that we have now?
Yes, ma'am.
We do have a special revenue fund set up for both of these grants, for the SAFER Grants and the CHIRP Grants, and it would require a transfer out of the general fund into those special revenue funds to make up any local share.
Correct. But whether it's earmarked or not, it's going to get paid.
That's up to the council through the appropriation process.
Correct.
I just want to make everybody aware that the 10% put the garbage on the tax bill and kept us at status quo for our staffing levels. So 8%.
The garbage.
The garbage beyond that, but that's 600,000. That does not keep us at the current staffing levels. Alderman Beedling.
Are we going to have to borrow any money for any reason if we go with this 10%?
Well, that 10% is gone. The motion on the floor is 8% now. The motion is 8%. That's the motion.
10 was shut down.
That's what we're talking about. We're talking about 8% now.
This is a motion to amend.
It's a motion to amend now.
8%? 8% do we have to borrow? Will we have to, will we be in a financial bind with that?
Do you mean borrowing the capital markets, like a working cash bond?
Yeah.
You know, I would hope not. We did a working cash bond in 2009, which is part of what increased our bonded portion of the levy. When you borrow on a taxable basis, I mean, for working cash, that means we have to borrow on a taxable basis. The people that buy those bonds have to pay income tax on the interest, so that drives up the interest rate. I don't foresee that necessarily, but we would have to continue the process of taking money from other funds, such as the Water Fund, to subsidize general operations, and we would have to look at either additional revenues or more cuts to balance the budget as part of the budget process.
And those cuts, and those cuts could be staff?
Absolutely. That's the majority of our general fund costs.
So that would have to come out of the police and fire budget, then?
That, again, that would be up to the councils, part of the budgeting process and the appropriation ordinance.
Make your choices.
Well, any more questions?
I just, I want to make one more comment.
Yes, Alderman May.
I'm just sitting here thinking, and of course, we're going to meet the grant requirements because we're not going to incur that much more debt by not fulfilling those obligations. So I didn't mean to imply that we weren't going to cover them. We are. But the problem is, let's talk about foreclosures again. Our code departments decimated already, and our foreclosure problem is not going away.
Getting worse.
And we're not at the leading edge of recovery when it comes to foreclosures. And this puts such a burden on our city, by no fault of our own. We did not ask for this burden, these foreclosed homes, but they are there. Banks are walking away from properties. They're dismissing foreclosure proceedings and walking away long after the people have been evicted. We have homes like that out there. Homes that are drug houses, squatters, totally deteriorating our neighborhoods. So I just say, think long and hard before we talk about decreasing any more staff. I know that we're not going to default on our obligation to these grants. I know that. But who's going to take the burden of this, then? Which department? And that's all I have.
Long, real quick, along those lines, Alderman May brings up a good point. A lot of banks walking away from a lot of homes. I can take you to three or four that are vacant now and wide open. Wide open. There are going to be drug houses. There are going to be houses of ill repute. There'll be houses where kids hang out. It's only a matter of time. And I know that's a pet peeve of Alderman Cunningham. It's definitely a pet peeve of mine. All you need is one dead person in there, and it'll be, it'll be an outcry. It'll be an outcry. Why didn't you do anything about it? Well, when you only have so much staff to go around, there's only so much you can do.
I'd like to add to that, too.
Alderman Newsom, then Alderman Conken.
Not so much as having the staff to take care of it. We don't have the revenue to take care of it. We don't even have the money to board up some of these homes. We don't have the money to tear them down that have been sitting vacant for 10 years, open, like Alderman May has said and Alderman Moizio, wide open. I've gotten calls from the schools that kids are skipping school and going over to these vacant houses, tearing some of the boards off, making makeshift mattresses, curtains hanging to the windows, blowing out of the windows. But we don't have the funds to board these homes up or tear them down. We can't force the banks to tear them down. Can't find the property owners. They've long gone. I haven't spoken up on this issue, but we have to give the city, the staff, something to work with. Your property taxes is only a small portion of the bill, of your tax bill. The city gets a small portion. The school districts get most of your tax dollars. Yes, they get most of it. Well, ours, they do, in the city of Waukegan. So we have to give this staff, the city, something to work with. We can't afford to lay off any more people in this city. We're working with minimal, at minimal cost. We can't do it. Even with 10 percent, we're operating at a loss. We need to move on this issue. We need to move on it tonight. We're here to make tough decisions. It's not only affecting the people in this community, it affects us, too. First, my taxes are going to go up. I got to pay them. I got to find some kind of way to pay them if I want to stay in my house. I got to pay the taxes for the school, for the township, everybody else's taxes that go up, too. I got to pay them. I got to cut someplace else, but I got to pay those taxes. So we need to make the tough decision tonight, do what we got to do as legislators. Sure, everybody's not going to be happy, but we got to give and take in this community. There was an outcry about the police. We laid off eight. We got a grant to bring them back. People were crying about the police. We don't have the safety, we don't have the protection. Now we're getting them back. We're getting them trained to get them out on the road. Our hands are tied. The unions, they dictate what we got to pay them. The state dictates how much we got to put in the pension. Our hands are tied there. We can't do anything about that. But we can do this tonight. We can give this city what it needs to operate, to take care of our infrastructure, to take care of our streets. Garbage, they're calling. If your garbage is not picked up, you're going to be calling the city. Have my garbage picked up. I'm paying for it. My street hasn't been fixed in 20 years. Where are we going to get the money to do it? So we got to make the tough decisions tonight, and I think we need to go with what's on the, if eight is not going to get a second, we need to reconsider with the 10 and get this done. Who wants to come back on Wednesday? We're going to have the same thing happen on Wednesday, or Thursday, or next week, or next year. Nobody wants their taxes to go up. But we got to bite the bullet. It's got to go up. We got to pay. We're living here in this city. We got to pay for what we need. We got to pay for the services that we are providing. And we're trying to do the best that we can here in this city. I'm sorry, thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
I just want to mention a couple things right along with Alderman May and Alderman Newsom. They bring up some very good points. The problem I got with raising these taxes up to 10 and the 14 percent, we're going to end up with the same issue. We're going to have a bunch of people that cannot afford their taxes in this community, and they're going to walk away. And we're going to have an even bigger problem, like Alderman May and Alderman Newsom said, with empty houses. And we're still in the same position where we won't have staff to deal with it. I think that we're going about this somewhat a little bit backwards. I don't think we should be laying off staff like code enforcement. We should be increasing them. By increasing the code enforcement, they should pay for themselves, they should pay their own salaries. Because there's plenty of fines out there. There's plenty of fines that I drive down the street and I can see. And I realize that we don't have the staff, the ones we have are doing a fantastic job. But ideally, they should pay their own salaries, and eventually, as fines and as problems in the neighborhood go away, then they can go away. Or they could do something else, because they would have taken care of all of the problems that we have in the city. Unfortunately, I don't know how we're going to pay for it. As Alderman Newsom and Alderman May have said, we need to get the revenue. But I think that that 10 percent is a high burden on the people that are not working. I think it's a high burden on the people that are struggling these days, and so I'll be thinking long and hard on it also, and those are any of my comments.
On the 10 percent which was rejected, the average, of course, this is an average. I know there's people out there that their homes are worth more than $150,000. This is an average. What was going to be the increase for the yearly average on $150,000 homes? You know, it's like $110, correct? Somewhere in that ballpark. Don't, you can go ahead and quote me, I'm sure it's not right, but oh, well. Okay, maybe it's going to be a dollar more, I'm sure I'll get a phone call. That's fine. That doesn't bother me. Okay? $10 a month. $10 a month. $10 a month on $150,000 home. No, that's on the 10. So on the 8, I'm assuming it would probably be 80, maybe? 80 dollars a year? But if we want vacant homes, and we want, we want, we want drug houses, and we want, we want that, I guess that's what we go for. So the motion is, Alderman Velco made the motion for 8. I seconded it. That's the amendment. So we're going to vote on the amended motion. Just to amend. And then we'll vote on actually taking the 8. All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Conkin. Yes?
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Uh, no.
Alderman Temp, I'm sorry, Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye, to amend.
Alderman Cunningham.
Where are we at?
Four to four.
Now what?
Make the motion for option A. Let's do the right thing here, come on.
You can't?
Greg, for the spirit of getting it to a vote, if I'm allowed to, I'll change to my to amend vote to yes, so that we can take it to vote. Do you see what I'm, can I do that?
Yeah.
Yes, to amend.
Yes, to amend. Understand, we can't go back to 10. That was defeated. You'd have to wait till the next meeting, which has to be, can be reconsidered? Okay? Okay. So right now, we're at 8 percent. That is on the table. Motion by Alderman Velco was seconded by myself for ordinance levy and assessing taxes of the city of Waukegan Lake County, Illinois for the 2012 tax levy year. We've already read the categories, that would be 8 percent. We've already discussed it. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conkin.
No.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
No.
Alderman Cunningham.
You know? Well, we got to come up with a rate, or we got to come back. And what's going to change in two days? I guess we're going to be here a while. What's going to change in two days?
Another Alderman and a mayor.
Okay. Well, we can.
Okay, we got to come back?
When?
Well, I think the, it's occupied on Thursday, so it's going to have to be Wednesday. Yeah, I can post it. I can post it first thing in the morning, I can post it tonight, so we can have the meeting on Wednesday. It's up to the council.
What's on the floor Wednesday?
There's a meeting here, there's a meeting here Thursday night.
No, no, no. What option will be on the floor Wednesday?
That's up to the Alderman. There's nothing, there's nothing there right now.
What's going to be on the agenda?
I don't know.
I would believe, sir, that the only options left, the 8 got defeated, the 10 got defeated, the 14 is the only thing left unless somebody comes up with something.
There could be a motion to reconsider as well.
From the reigning party, that is correct.
Yes.
Right. Wasn't there, if Mayor, roll time, if I may have?
Yeah, yeah, Alderman Velco.
I hate doing this to you, I really do, all the time. There was a proposal at the beginning, and I believe it was on a discussion from Alderman Moisio, and you came up with some facts and figures, either that or Alderman Cunningham, that if we left the garbage the way it is now, and I know you don't like that, and I really don't like it also, left the garbage on the water bill, that the taxes would only go up 1 percent, 2 percent?
So the, currently, in 2004, the city would levy for a category called garbage disposal. And that was just earmarking a certain amount of the property taxes to defray the cost of that. It's not necessarily a direct tax for a direct service, similar to how you may pay taxes to the public schools even if you don't have students there. So when that, that was eliminated in 2004. A couple of years ago, the city started putting a fee on water bills to try to help recoup the cost of the garbage program. And right now, it started off at $5 a quarter, it's gone up to $15 per quarter. And that actually sunsets in July. So if the council takes no action, that $60 per year that we currently collect, that defrays about 15 to 18 percent of the cost of the program, will go away. So that would sunset. So if the Aldermen don't want to consider earmarking a portion of the property tax bill to go toward garbage disposal, then the taxes would not go up, you're correct. The overall levy would not go up. But then I would recommend that at the same meeting, an ordinance extending the refuse collection fee be considered since it currently sunsets. If we charged residents for the full cost of garbage pickup, it would be anywhere between $400 to $600 per year, just to kind of give you an idea of the cost of that program.
Correct. But if we went in that direction, or only, even if we just doubled what the residents are currently paying, and we didn't put it on the tax levy, the tax would only, the bill would only go up about 1 or 2 percent.
I will draft whatever ordinance I'm given directive to draft. The 21 percent option was never defeated. It was, there was a motion on the floor, and it failed to receive a second. So I'm not sure legally if that's an option that could still be considered. I think all of them could be reconsidered. But the mayor's office has put forth a 21 percent option, the 14 percent option, which was trying to have a middle road, the 10 percent option, and then Alderman Velco put forward an 8 percent option. If there's another option that the Aldermen would like me to, you know, run the numbers on, I can do that between now and Wednesday or Thursday, I'm not sure when the meeting is. But there's no other ordinance that's been drafted to that effect.
Chairman?
Yeah.
While Tina's?
Alderman May.
This is what, let's be really clear. This $15 a quarter we're paying on our tax, on our water bill right now to subsidize garbage is paying for 17 percent, I believe, of the contract.
Currently, and as those costs escalate, that percentage will be down.
It's not covering it by any means.
No.
So Tina, just so I'm clear, I thought I heard you say the mayor's office. So is the mayor in support of the 14 percent and the 10 percent, or either or?
I don't believe that he's expressed any public support for the 10 percent to date. The 14 percent was his effort to have an option that was more attractive to the Aldermen than the 21 percent. So that was, he contacted the majority of the Aldermen, if not all of you, last week to discuss the 14 percent. But the 10 percent is not one that he has supported to date.
So it's, just so I'm clear, so the mayor is in support of the 14 percent?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, unless we have another proposal or another motion on the floor, looks like we're coming back Wednesday.
It looks like it has, it has to be, I'm looking at the schedule. There's a holiday party set up on Wednesday. The chambers will be occupied Wednesday. The party is on Thursday. There's a holiday luncheon, and then from 6:30 to 8 o'clock is the historic preservation committee meeting. So Friday would be the only day available.
Got to be, can't do it Friday.
Mr. Clerk, is it possible that we can get to the historic preservation and inform them what the seriousness of the cabinet council chambers, and they can be moved to another location?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I move that we direct the clerk to inform the historic preservation that we will need the council chambers for a Thursday early meeting.
7 o'clock?
No, Thursday. Got to get 48 hours.
What time? 7? 6?
Only one thing on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
I think everybody's going to have their mind up, 6.
6?
6. You're going to already know what you're going to do.
How are we going to know what to do? We haven't seen anything.
We already know what we're going to do. Why would we come back on Thursday? We're going to do what we're going to do tonight.
Well.
We know what we have to do.
We don't have a vote. If we don't have a vote tonight, obviously, we're going to need, we're going to need to come back here Thursday, no, no later than Thursday, with whatever we're going to do.
Alderman Conkin?
Tina, what is our break even percentage? What do we need to break even?
20 percent.
Square right across the board. Is it the 10?
14 percent. To break even so that we're not in a deficit anymore, from an operations standpoint, the 14 percent.
14 is what's needed to maintain what we have right now.
Maintain what we have, plug the deficit that we've had for years, and discontinue rating the water fund. That's 14 percent.
Okay, thank you.
And that 14 percent does not include bringing on new staff?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I have a suggestion.
Alderman May?
Because at this point, we need something. What if we did an amendment? There's some of us on 8, there's some of us on 10. What if we did an amendment? I like option B, the way it's set up. So what if we made a figure that's 9 percent, that's a compromise between 8 and 10, take that difference and lop it off wherever you got to lop it off? Not the police or fire, but lop it off the garbage contract, and then we'll make that up. Do you know what I'm saying? To get to a 9 percent number? Can we get agreement on that? Is that a compromise that we can, I mean, because some people voted no on both, so I don't know. I, I'm trying to come up with something here. Do you want to address my suggestion? Is that ridiculous, or?
Not at all. Nothing's ridiculous. The key difference between, one of the key differences between Alderman Velco's proposal and the 10 percent proposal was that Alderman Velco's proposal did have a portion that would go to the Illinois municipal retirement fund, which is, all of these things are important to address, and that would address a long-term liability that's related to the non-sworn personnel's pension obligation. The 10 percent didn't address the IMRF, but rather addressed putting funds aside specifically for the police protection and the fire protection. So, you know, those things, and the police pension, the fire pension, those are fixed statutorily. But those are the kinds of things that I would need direction from on what is it that you would like to see the majority of the council? Is it the SAFER and COPS grant being specifically called out on the levy? Or is it more having the IMRF on there as a pension obligation? Those are, that's a major difference between the two.
Madam Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Sir, I don't mean to override, I do apologize. Ma'am, I want to be very clear tonight. I am not sold that I'm not going to support a 10 or 14. I'm telling you that there are some other questions I may have. Now, right, at this point, I'm ready for Thursday night. I would be speaking with Tina. I'm going to be speaking with other people. I'm not closed on the idea. I'm just not closed on the idea as of tonight. That's all. So, you know, you, I don't know where you stand, I can tell you where I'm standing. I'm still standing with more fact finding. Thursday night, 6 o'clock, I'll be here and ready to roll.
Okay. That's pretty much it.
Well, with that, I was going to comment, but I'm not going to. I'm not going to belabor the point. I don't know if it was, I don't know if 8 was too high, or 10 was too high, or what it was. But if it's not 10, understand, if it's below 10, then you leave the garbage on. And if you take the garbage off, it'll go way below 10. I don't think that's smart, because that's not good finances, if you talk to our finance director. But just be prepared for layoffs and more vacant homes that we can't deal with if you don't. No, there's no audience time, sir, sorry. You can contact your Alderman if you want after the meeting and talk about it. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Item B.
It's 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock Thursday.
6 o'clock Thursday here.
We probably, on the announcement for the meeting, the notice, there should probably be some numbers, Tina, that you'll have to work up some spectrum of options that once again is probably, I think the wide spectrum. I think the wider spectrum, the better. If I'm sensing where the council is for them, so that we would have a variety of choices on Thursday night. Is that counsel in agreement with that?
Yeah. I would recommend anybody up here who has a suggestion, please give it to Tina, so she can draw it up. Don't come here and say, "I don't have one, but I don't want to vote on anything." If you have a proposal that you'd like to give to Tina, please contact her in the next two days, so we can get... We got it Thursday... Wednesday... What did I say? Wednesday?
Thursday.
We're doing it coming Thursday?
6 o'clock.
Thursday? It's gotta be done. There ain't no other way. It's gotta be done.
Does that give you enough time?
Sure.
No, seriously. No...
Well, it has to be.
Does it give you enough time?
You don't have a choice.
To file it?
To file it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's across the street.
I know. But I mean, to compile everything, does that... From that evening till the next morning, does that give you enough time?
The clerk and I'll get it done.
Okay.
If not, we're shutting the doors.
No, we're not.
All right. Move to item B. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Valco, to adopt, as presented in ordinance, approving zoning calendar V-1-12, vacation of Cornell Road from Beet Road to Howard Avenue, held over by Alderman Tempest. What do we have to do on this corporation council? Alderman Tempest is not here, and...
Roll call. It's no difference. Roll call.
No difference. Back up.
Back up. All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Thank you. Item C. Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Valco, to adopt, as presented in ordinance, approving zoning calendar V-2-12, vacation of Highland Avenue west of Cornell Road, held over by Alderman May.
Alderman... I mean, Chairman?
Yes.
I do need to make one comment on this.
Sure.
This evening, for the second item for Highland Avenue, it's been slightly amended to remove the portion that was going to the Willowbrook Homeowners Association pending further discussion. So, that one block of road that was going to be given to the Willowbrook is not part of the ordinance at this time.
Okay. Do we have to make that as amended? Is that...
No. Because it's held over that road.
Okay.
It's go down the...
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. It's in front of everyone.
All right. All right. Yes, Alderman Conken.
Just a question, Alderman May. I asked you this question earlier. This was some concern that Alderman Tempest had. I had the same thing. Since the Park District had no intentions of making this into a park, Alderman Tempest's... And my question was, why are we worrying about vacating this? Could you answer that for me, please, just so everybody knows?
I believe, in my understanding of the situation, and someone can correct me from the audience if I'm incorrect, but the Director of the Park District is here. The land donation is coming from... It is being facilitated by a local realtor. And this is just a good way for the Park District to do everything in one fell swoop. It's just a one clean transfer, and then, the land's gonna sit until it goes into their plan. It's just a way to tidy up everything in one fell swoop and not have loose ends. Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Thank you. No reports on communications. New business. Item A. Approve a payroll dated December 12, 2012, in the amount $1,425,819.76. Motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Item B. Approval of bill dated December 17, 2012, in the amount of $831,441.38. Motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item C. Accept and place on file the Treasury report for the month of November 2012. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item D. Approve raffle sale application for Waukegan Main Street. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Presentation by City Treasurer, John Schwab. Dr. Schwab.
Thank you, sir. I just want to remind the City Council that the audit is due on or about November 1st. We have asked for an extension. I approve of that. If anybody wants a copy of that, I'll be glad to provide it for them. That ends it. My report.
Thank you, Dr. Schwab. And item F. CD-BG program allocations for 2013. Is this a presentation, or just...
Just approval.
It's just an approval? Is it money? So, we may have to have a motion by Alderman Newsome, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, vote, please.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Okay. Alderman's time.
Alderman Conken is up first.
Thank you. Well, this is the last time we're meeting, or it should've been the last time we were meeting this year. I guess we're gonna meet one more time. Sorry, Tina. It's been a tough year. I think our staffs and all the people that have worked for the city have done a fine job this year, and I think that I'm very happy with the services that I get from the City of Waukegan. But like I said, it's a tough year. We're walking a fine line between raising the taxes that'll force people out of their house, and raising the taxes to keep the city running as we like it and for the services that we're getting. That decision, again, as we've all seen, was gonna be made Thursday night. So, I hope that we all come to the proper decision, that everybody can live with. And like I say, everything I've heard is, nobody's happy. It's probably the right decision. So, I've got a feeling that's probably the decision we're gonna make. Other than that, it has been a long year, and I just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a good holiday. Everybody be safe and enjoy the rest of the year. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Yeah, just one comment. Like I said, make sure you... Whatever anyone up here thinks is the right proposal, make sure you give it to Tina, so your voice is heard on what you think is the right way to go. Take the garbage off. Leave the garbage on. Do this, do that. But if you have a proposal, please bring it forward to her, so that she has... She can prepare it. I don't want to raise taxes either, but I also don't want any more homes in Waukegan that are vacant, that are gonna become nothing but havens for crime. God knows we need as many police officers as we can. We need more code enforcers to help deal with all those problems. You always hear people say, "We gotta cut. You gotta cut. You gotta cut." I think in the last three years, we've done a pretty good job of trying to do that. Almost every one of our increases have been zero or very little for our employees. Some of our union contracts are a little bit higher. But we have tried to hold the line. We have tried to hold the line. This is a big town of 100,000 people in a large geographical area, but we have to all try to be in this together. Thank you.
Alderman Beedling.
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Newsome.
I'm gonna echo Alderman Beedling. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We're here, trying to make some tough decisions, but we'll be back on Thursday to do what we have to do. Have a good night.
Alderman May.
I just have one announcement to make about the 14th Annual Polar Bear Plunge, which is thrown in conjunction with the Waukegan Park District and the City of Waukegan to benefit the special recreation services of Northern Lake County. It's on New Year's Day from 10 to 11. All kinds of crazy people jump in the lake. It's a great, great time, and it's for a good cause. I did have Alderman's time prepared, but I'm not gonna go there, since we didn't pass a vote on the levies. So, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Alderman Valco.
Happy holidays to everybody. Thank you for a tremendous year.
Alderman Rivera.
I just want to say, we just have to continue cutting our spending, because, believe me, we've already feed everybody to death. Businesses are hurting and raised fees there. Believe me, we've looked at everywhere to see what we can do to bring our new revenues into this community. We've gotta look at everything. So, I just also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
A couple things. One, I had the pleasure of going to the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra. I think it was the other day, and I was just totally amazed, amazed as to what they do and how they just bring so much joy to people. It was at the church next door here. It was an awesome, awesome celebration that they had next to the Waukegan Library, and an opportunity to go down and visit that. Wow! That was amazing to see all those kids and family members down at our Waukegan Library. So, kudos to them. And as expressed earlier, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone in the City of Waukegan. God bless.
Motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Conken, to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.